Okay. Just need a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry. All vote.
Oh, is everyone signed into the meeting?
Let me check.
I know, just seeing Ed.
I'm in.
I'm in, all the papers.
So am I.
And civic clerk, did you select that you're present in voting?
No, you know, I don't think.
Oh, yeah, I don't think I did that, yep.
Where is that at? Under the meeting?
Yeah.
No, mine goes right to the special meeting. It doesn't, like, I don't have, for the last meeting, it has the green box that says let's leave meeting.
Yeah.
But this one doesn't have, and if I press on it, it just goes right to there.
That's where I started. That's where mine do too.
Okay.
Let me.
And I'm up there. My name is in there.
Okay.
Yeah, mine too.
Let me manually get everybody logged in.
Yours too?
I can't, yeah.
Your name's there?
Yes.
He's gonna log us on, apparently.
Okay, so the motion to approve the agenda was made by Melissa, seconded by Ed?
Yep.
Yes.
Should be coming over everybody.
Not yet.
Didn't come over?
Uh-uh.
Nope.
Okay. Why don't we just do this manually?
Thanks.
Vote verbally.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, first item on the agenda is Ray Schiller. So obviously, Ray is not here, so your name for the record, please?
Jennifer Wagner with Ash Ash Family Corporation.
And you are?
Be appointed temporary guardian.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so it's our understanding then, he is looking then to be moved to, um, just get it up here.
430 Clay, I think that is.
Cause mine's not coming up here.
Yeah, you know what? I've got blank pages also. Oh, here it goes. Yep, 430 South Clay.
430 South Clay Street, okay. So, and that is a nursing home, correct?
I believe so. I just got him on Thursday, so I don't know much about him at all.
Okay. Do you know if he is both mentally and physically incapacitated?
Um, Aurora sent me notes. They said that they believe he most likely has dementia and is pretty much progressing pretty fast. And he is still a two-on-two assist with them, with a follow.
What does that mean?
Um, two staff members assist him with cares, walking, getting up.
Okay.
Pretty much.
So basically, without them, he would be basically bedridden. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So in terms of the facility, what precautions are there in the facility in terms of him being able to get out, or is it all locked doors both internally and externally? Do you know?
I have no clue.
You have no clue?
No, I never even heard of this facility before.
Okay. And right now, he's at Aurora, and they just, they want to move to this location?
Correct. From my understanding, they called like fifty-five different nursing homes, and nobody would accept him because of being a sex offender. And they got in contact with this one, and they accepted him. It's just a matter of getting it passed.
Do you know how long he was expected to stay there?
I do not know. Sorry, I don't know. I don't know nothing.
You don't know that one?
I got him, and they told me I had to come to this meeting today, so.
Go ahead. I was thinking that we should call the Santa Maria Nursing Home. It was my thought that was kind of running through my head, just in terms of asking what the facility's like, what they expect from this individual, how they're gonna monitor him.
Hopefully, they have more information.
Okay. I have my cellphone, so I can use to call us.
Yeah. And we've got a speakerphone over here. I don't know if there, is there a phone up there at all?
Uh-uh.
No.
Do you have the phone number?
I have, yes, for it. It's nine two oh four three two five two three one.
While you're dialing, would it help you to take five, ten minutes just to review the file?
They didn't really, I don't have much. It's just from the notes from Aurora. Otherwise, the courts don't give me anything. This is all Aurora's notes on his medical.
Okay.
Like, I don't even know what his sex crime is, so.
Is that typical, that they won't give you all that information?
Yeah, yes.
And they want you to be the?
Guardian.
Without having all the information?
Correct. That's when we have to do our research. We meet with the client, but I only had a day.
Right, of course, okay.
Okay.
What was the phone number again? Nine two zero?
Four three two five two three one.
And I'd ask for the admitting administrator, probably.
How are they going to hear you guys?
That's why I was gonna say, I can use my cellphone. I can put it on speaker.
Okay. I mean, if you prefer that.
At least we can ask questions. I think that probably the best way to go.
There isn't a hookup, there is there a PC plug-in?
No, let's see what.
You could probably put the phone on.
Yeah, I mean, I could get the phone up to the bench here. Let's just see.
That's why, let me just put it on my cellphone. It's not a big deal.
Santa Maria, this is Terry. How may I help you?
Hi, Terry. This is Dean Gerondale, and I'm actually with the Green Bay Sex Offender Registry Board, and we-
Ah!
Yeah, thank you.
You wanna talk to Mary, don't you?
I, well, it's in regards to Mr. Schiller?
Yeah.
Yes, if I could, that's the person?
Sure. Okay, hang on.
Sounds like you were expected.
This is Mary.
Hi, Mary. This is Dean Gerondale with the Green Bay Sexual Offenders Residency Board. And we're just going over Mr. Schiller's application to move to your facility. We've just got a few questions for you, if that's all right?
Sure.
So in regards to your facility, we've read the information on his current status in terms of his mobility. But what other things do you have at your facility to make sure that he's, that he can't, you know, get out of his room, or get out out of the facility? Do you have, like, indoor locks as well as outdoor locks?
Our doors are secured.
Okay.
On the floor, and yeah, he'd be on third floor.
Okay.
And we have a full staff twenty-four seven.
Okay.
How many people are on staff on each floor?
Each floor? Well, it all depends on, um, on day shift. There's two CNA's plus a nurse on that floor.
And during the night time?
Excuse me?
During the night?
During the night, there is a, one nurse for two floors, but then there's a CNA, one CNA on each floor.
And how many patients are they responsible for at night?
For the night, we only have twenty-four residents here.
In total? Okay.
In total.
And so at night, so on the, on the, on the CNA, how many people is she looking at on that one floor at night?
At night?
Yeah.
Um, there's fifteen on one floor and nine on another, but it would be fifteen people on that floor.
Okay, okay.
And what is your policy or procedure, or what, your protocol regarding patients who attempt to leave the facility? What is the CNA supposed to do?
Oh, well, notify, ask right away, go get their resident. But we call the police department. We're in the same time, want you to do a full check around the building. Then we call the police department, and, um, but we continue looking for, if they get that far. But we do a bed check right away, as soon as somebody notes that somebody might be missing. But I don't think he's ambulatory at all.
Okay. Okay, it says that he can only basically do like an eight-foot shuffle, is what it says here.
Oh, yeah, and his bed.
And how long, do you know? Do you know how long he's expected to be there, or do you have no clue at this particular time?
I have no, no idea, no.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any more questions for her?
I do.
Go ahead.
Are children allowed to visit any patients on that third floor where he will be staying?
Um, yeah, there would be. There would be.
Okay, and so their children will be allowed to visit on that floor? What, and how many, do you have any devices that will alert staff if Mr. Schiller should either leave his room or leave the floor?
Alerts. We would have an alarm, an alarm on him. The alarm would go off at the main desk, and then we would know.
Okay.
What kind of alarm?
Like a bed alarm, or a chair alarm, whatever he, he would be hooked up to.
Okay.
Okay.
Because it rings, and it would ring down at the nurse station, which is, the hall is not that far from his room.
And with-
We have the nurse station.
And with regard to your belief that Mr. Schiller is not ambulatory beyond approximately eight feet, how was that determined?
Well, that was actually not by them. That was actually within the-
Therapy.
Therapy, the hospital.
Therapy would determine that.
Yeah.
Okay. Was he at all interviewed by someone from your facility?
He did. One of our nurses went to interview him and talked to him. And we felt we could handle him, mainly because we do have another gentleman here that was on the sex offender list.
Okay, and based on-
But I have, I'm sorry, but I have to say that if, if your policy with him is, if he can, you know, no children can, we have children come into the building to sing and stuff too. I mean, if you think he's a threat, and we would have to notify all of them, then we would not take them.
Right, well, we're just, I think, you know, we don't know that yet, but we just wanted to know what, what, you know, security procedures you have in place.
Yeah, we would, yeah. We'd have to keep an eye on them and everything, and just that, um, children aren't allowed in our facility.
Okay.
So if you feel that he's, he wouldn't-
We can't give you that information?
Then we would not take them.
We can't give you any recommendations? I, I'm just trying to find out what your policies and procedures are.
Okay, okay. Well, because when I called initially, they said that it was up to the Green Bay Police Department to determine that advising the neighbors, because there is a school in the area, or whatnot, and they said that's what this hearing was for. So that's why we, you know, went along with the hearing, of course, we thought you were gonna tell us something.
Okay, do you wanna tell them?
Well, sure. I mean, ultimately, if we allow him to, to stay there, then you'd get a letter from us indicating as such, that, you know, that he can stay at that facility. If not, then we would send you, we would send you a denial, which means then you couldn't, you couldn't house him there.
Correct, okay, that'd be good. That'd be, that'd be fine with us.
And based upon your understanding, or the interview by the nurse who went from your facility that interviewed him, did she, did anybody give an estimate or expected length of stay?
No, no.
Is your facility, in terms of, you know, cause he's been, you know, he's got a court-appointed person, and apparently, he's got dementia. Is the facility set up for people with patients with dementia at this point?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, most of our, his staff, dementia.
Okay, okay. So this could be, this could be a long time in terms of this location, basically, based upon-
Yes, it could be, yes, yes.
All right.
Is he there for rehabilitation, or because of the dementia?
Um, I think both, both. Cause he was falling.
Okay.
I understood he was falling. He was a fall risk.
Okay.
And that's why, well, we were putting him close to the nurse's station, but that was what started it, and then the courts got into all his other things, so.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anybody?
No.
All right, well, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Sure, my pleasure.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. So it sounds like to me this facility is set up for people with dementia. Sounds like they're gonna have a device on him that if he tries to leave his room or his bed, that an alarm would go off. Is that everybody's understanding?
Yes, that's mine.
However, it is also my understanding, based upon what the, um, what she's told us, they do not have a policy in place regarding sex offenders and children visiting the facility.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that they, it's, first of all, it sounds like they have another sexual offender there. And, but you're right, it doesn't sound like if a group comes over to sing for him or something like that, they don't have a policy that those people have to stay in their rooms, or, or anything to that effect.
True. Another thing that I, I find concerning is that in, regardless if there is a group of children who come to visit, and use for singing or what have you, and usually, they have an adult supervisor with them. If there are patients who have grandchildren, great-grandchildren, who visit, and who are young enough, and wander through the halls, there's nothing guaranteeing that people know that their children shouldn't, should not do that, or enter into his room. Because that is one thing, having visited nursing homes like that, when children visit, people-
They're running around.
They're running around.
Yep, I agree with you on that. You know, I guess that my, my, my thought process here is, you know, how far does our board take responsibility for, for that? That policy, I guess, or not lack of policy in determination, I guess.
What I think is knowing what, that whether or not we determine that he should be allowed to enter this facility, the fact that they don't have procedures in place, that is relied, that's something they need to have. That is not our responsibility to make sure there are, that they have procedures. But our, our responsibility is to protect the public and the community. The community extends to people who visit and reside in that facility.
Mm-hmm. So a question I have for you, then. So is it appropriate, or can you ask for such a policy to be implemented in regards to this, then, that, that could be sent to the city, that this facility now has a procedure and process in place when children enter the facility, that his door shut, or what other, you know, precautions?
Yeah, I can, for him, have the facility, when there's children visitors, have them, put them in his room, shut the door.
Well, I think we want is some, you know, I'm speaking for myself. I don't wanna speak for anybody else on the board, but I think that if we're gonna go forward with this, I think, you know, rightfully so, in terms of your concern, is we probably some want some sort of written policy that they're gonna have a procedure or a process in place when children enter that facility.
I mean, I can't do it for the whole facility. I can do a procedure for him specifically.
Specifically, right, that they would do that, hey, for him, so that if, if we would have proven the facility, that the board knows that, hey, they have procedure and process in place for that, if children enter that facility for him,
Yep.
this is what they're gonna do.
Yep.
Would that be appropriate?
I, I don't, I don't think it's our place at this time to put that, that is something that I think the department, or who, the body who is appointed, the guardianship over-
Right, that's what I'm saying. She should do that. I'm just saying-
I mean, I'm not advising one, when, or the other. I'm not advising what, um, because this is, um, we're talking about a business. We're talking about-
Well, it sounded to me like if they have, if there's concern, if they're gonna have concerns about his, uh, him being a risk, being a hazard, they're not gonna accept him, and I think that, you know, if we were to say that we need you to have this type of a policy, it's gonna be moot, cause they're not gonna take him.
I don't think, I think it's inappropriate for them to ask us if we have concerns. That is something they should already have in place, since they already have a 290 registrant residing there. If they haven't thought about those policies and procedures and protections for their visitors before today's date, they don't see that there's a need, obviously.
Yeah.
So.
Well, because if you read his medical, if you read his medical record, you know, it sounds like he's, besides his dementia, which we have no point of judging at this point, you know, what it is. I can only judge what's written here in terms of his physical condition. His physical condition basically says is, you know, the guy can't do much because he's gonna fall.
It doesn't require, just to be clear, my prior history as a prosecutor in California, and prosecuting sexual abuse cases, it does not matter whether somebody's ambulatory or not.
Yeah.
A child can wander into any room, especially children under a certain age, and there are children who are more friendly than others, and all that can happen is inappropriate touching over clothing, slipping of a hand underneath clothing. I'm not saying that's gonna happen.
Right.
My concern is that it could happen, especially since they do not have any policies or procedures in, in place to protect child visitors.
Yep. You know, I just, you know, I'll make the last comment, then we can ask for a vote, unless anybody else wants to speak. To me, this is, this is much like when we ask another sexual offender, saying, hey, you gotta continue your classes, you need to come back, and you need to do this, to make sure that we believe that ultimately, you're, you're safe to the public. In this particular case, because this individual is not mentally competent, asking for them to have a written procedure in regards to him seems no different than what we'd ask another sexual offender to do in terms of being able to prove that they're, you know, not at risk.
I don't think we can say that. We don't have the paperwork that specifically determines why a guardian or was, was necessary. Was it his physical, mental?
We don't even know what he did. We don't even know, child enticement would-
Child enti, buried within the context, they were young children.
Right.
Did you see that? I didn't read that.
Yeah, I was, at our time, I saw something going back to nineteen eighty. I saw a date, but I-
Or maybe it was other, I'm, I'm not sure. But regardless, what matters is, we're looking at children. Say we don't know an age. We have to protect public, the public, and that includes children who go to that facility. My view, and it's my personal view, every, obviously, anybody can vote any way they deem appropriate. My vote is not necessary. My concern is that there's no system in place or to protect any child.
I was just chiming, since there was some concern raised, whether it was the guardianship was due to physical or mental limitations. Guardianships in Wisconsin are granted based on a finding of incompetence, so it's based on the dementia, it's based on the mental concern.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, if there else has? Okay, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna make a motion in regards to Mr. Schiller. I'm gonna make a motion to approve Mr. Schiller moving to 430,
South Clay.
South Clay Street, pending a written procedure by the facility in regards to when children enter that facility. That he will be segregated and, and not be allowed to move from a particular location. If they don't wanna do that, then my opinion is, is then, if they don't do it, then he's not eligible to move there.
Just a point of-
Go ahead.
Concern with the language used. If you're, to approve pending, that means they can move him today if that's what they choose to do?
No, they'd have to have the written procedure to us prior to doing anything like that.
Okay, so then that, then that's not approval, not approving his moving, unless or until they provide us with the policies, written policies and procedures.
So, okay, I guess for clarification, I'd approve Mr. Schiller to live at 400 East Irving.
No, South Clay.
South Clay, South Clay. At the point in which we receive a written procedure from the facility indicating how he will be segregated and have controls in place to assure no children, he will have any interaction with children.
Can I just ask, how soon did you think he was going to move?
From my understanding, the hospitals let him out ASAP, but if we need to do the procedure, I can get that, and then get a two-bay list.
And then it just goes to you, and then that's?
Yep. So that's, that's the motion.
So just, just to make sure, I understand the wording of the motion, from the, it's the, it's a motion to approve upon receipt of the written procedure by the nursing home segregating Mr. Schiller when children are present in the, in the facility, or on his floor, or what's your-
In the facility.
All right.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Sending it for a vote? Did it not pop up on the tablets?
No.
No.
All right, I see that Ed was able to vote. I can, I can do voice votes. Dean, how do you vote on the motion?
Aye.
Melissa?
No.
Renee?
Aye.
Motion fails on a two-to-two vote.
I voted no.
Oh, okay. All right. Does anybody else wanna make any other motion?
I, Brooke, I move that we deny Mr. Schiller's application to move to the Clay Street Nursing Home.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
All right, I just sent it for the vote. Dean, how do you vote on the motion?
Posed.
Ed?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Renee?
Posed.
Motion fails, two-to-two vote.
Okay. Based upon the fact that we can move to discussion, is there anything that would change anyone's opinion in regards to this? Or is any other?
I, I have a problem with approving with the idea that, you know, we're gonna get something, but not seeing that. If I saw something in front of me right now that says, yes, indeed, this is our procedure when children are- uh, when children are, are on the floor, when they're in the facility, um, any registered sex offenders will be specifically, you know, isolated, what have you. If I knew that that was in place, then I'd feel comfortable voting to, to approve.
But you wanna read it first.
I'd wanna read it first, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you know, what's the vehicle, what, what's the mechanism for, you know, if that first motion had gone through, what's the mechanism for that to come back here?
It might be totally inadequate.
They could say, okay, yeah, we've got a procedure, and, and it's, but, you know, we haven't seen it.
Could you call that Mary back and ask her what she does for the sex offender they have now?
I will not be happy with that, I need to see a written, first of all-
But they're a business, and you have to accept that they're gonna-
No, I don't.
Their liability.
No, I don't.
Well, then, no, I guess you don't.
I need to see something in writing, I need to know that this is part of their policies and procedures, because if they are the only facility in, say, a hundred mile radius, that is going to accept sex offenders, this is something that they should have already had in place. If they didn't think about it, until-
But we don't know what they have in place, we didn't really ask, she said they have another one, she didn't really say-
No, no, she, no, she did, she said, we don't have a procedure in place.
They don't.
She said that.
I didn't hear that.
Yep, she said that.
Which is problematic, I mean, they, they do have a duty to care, a duty, duty to, you know, that's-
And it's something that any reasonable person who is a management or administrator of a nursing home should have thought of, or, you know, I can't worry about their civil liability, their damages, what I can worry about, I do have the, um, duty to worry about, is any people within the city's limits, any children who go to that facility.
Okay, so, I mean, this is where we're gonna end up, okay? So, you know, I'm gonna make another motion, okay, in regards to this, but the, the motion's gonna ultimately be that, you know, that procedure's gonna have to be reviewed and approved by this board, prior to him having to be able to move there, okay? We call a special meeting for this, I'm not calling another special meeting for it, um, to review that document. So, you know, this'll have to come in front of the board at our next scheduled meeting to review that document, and then based upon, you know, approval of that document by the board, they'll either say yes or no, in terms of a final option for this individual. So although Aurora wants to, wants to move him, they, they're not gonna be able to move him, till that, so, um, at least from the standpoint, because right now, both motions failed.
Right.
And no one's willing to move, so, and I, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, I think that's probably the right thing to do. You know, so, I, I think that, you know, based upon this motion I make and approval of that, then, you know, they, you'd have to go to them, hey, we need a, a written procedure, it's gotta come back to this, come back to the board, and then at our next scheduled meeting, we'll vote on that procedure if it's adequate for him to, to enter that facility. So, um, so rather than, I think, um, I'm asking you, the motion I'm gonna make is, is for uh, to have a document drafted by the facility, um, that would be brought to this board, and then we would vote on-
Would, would the motion just be to hold open?
Hold it open, yep.
So it's-
Until we get a written procedure that we can look at.
Could I, could I ask a question? Could we just have it be denied, and then they reapply next month with the paperwork, this would be like denying not having all the paperwork we need.
I mean, the, the motion could be either way, the motion could be to hold the matter open to the next meeting, or it could be denying reapply, I mean, either motion could be made.
Quite honestly, because the facility is not making the, the application, it's-
Well, it's up to her, ultimately.
Right, what I'm getting at is, we can't do anything to force the facility to do anything, it is up to them, if they want to have Mr. Schiller there, then I, my suggestion is deny and request reapplication.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to deny, um, Mr. Schiller, uh, to move to four-thirty, uh, South Clay Street, is there a second?
Seconded.
Alright, I'll just take the votes, uh, verbally, uh, Dean?
Yeah.
Ed?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Renee?
Nay.
Okay.
Motion passes, three to one.
Okay, so here's, here's what you need to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, you, you need to just, he's got an application here, and I don't know if, Mary, if you can get that to her, 'cause she's the guardian now, the application that was originally submitted, and we just need to have that resubmitted to the city.
Okay.
Along with that, written policy.
Sure.
And then at the next scheduled meeting, you just gotta show up again, and we can put you on the agenda, and we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Is there any other business for the board? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Oh.
Is there a, a motion regarding the next meeting date?
Uh, next meeting is Wednesday, August eighth.
Seconded.
I'll, uh, is there anyone who's voting against that?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll mark it, um, I'll vote in front of them. And then a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Complete?
Yes.
Yeah, my husband did.
Oh, he did, okay.
He didn't forget. Yeah, it happens. See you next month.
Yep.
Do you, silly question.